Perfect.
Good evening, welcome to the Palmer Town Council meeting. It is May 8th, 2023. We are going to call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great.
First on the agenda, we have visitors' comments for anything that is not on the agenda. So.
The person I want to see the most is in here.
You're gun eyeing. You're gun eyeing for someone?
Can you just say your name and your address?
I'm Steve Cosmeter, by the way, if anybody doesn't know me. I'm back here to discuss, number one, the Thorndike Bridges. Back in, when was it, September, I had spoken with Mr. McNutt there about the bridges and the timeline, and he gave me this paper showing that anticipated construction schedule. Start April or May. And now I see that nothing is happening. And doesn't look like anything's gonna happen.
Well, actually, we do have on the agenda tonight a resolution to to take the money out to pay for this bridge, which that means that we are just about ready to start the construction of it. So if you want to wait until about halfway through the meeting, and we'll talk a little bit more about the timeline. I know Ryan has kept us updated throughout, you know, throughout the entire time that we've been trying to address this bridge. As you know, this bridge being closed affects me very much because I live pretty close, so I can understand just as much as the rest of the community that having this bridge out is a huge issue. But the reason why there's been a lot of delays isn't really anything on the town side. There's a lot of permitting and permissions that we have to get from the state. And a lot of the reasons why it's been delayed is because of the state engineers and the state's planning. So, you know, I think that Ryan and the town has been doing their due diligence to try to get this project done as quick as possible. And like I said, tonight, we will, you know, hopefully pass the resolution to fund that bridge and sign the contract this week.
Will I be able to speak? Or is this my only chance to speak?
Uh, yeah, if if we want to have some discussion later on in the meeting, we can have some discussion. But I don't, do you have any other question other than what, like?
Well, I was wondering, I, one day I saw about thirty guys in hard hat and vest on there milling around. I was just wondering what went on then. And anything got accomplished that day? Were you there? Yeah, and?
And stuff got accomplished.
Can you elaborate?
Yes, that was all of the, that was what's called a pre-bidders meeting. All of the prospective firms that would like to bid on the reconstruction of the Church Street Bridge went down there to physically view what they may potentially bid upon. So that's what that was.
Okay. So, and how are we gonna pay for this anyway?
Um, we plan to fund it through stabilization funds.
Through what?
Through stabilization. It's like the, it's like the the town savings account.
Any day fund?
Uh, I would consider it more of a.
What do you call it? Any day stabilization, what?
Right.
Same thing?
Uh, I would consider it more of a savings account, but.
Savings account, how much is in it?
How much is in the savings? Yeah.
How much?
Uh. I had the number.
I think we have it.
Oh, I have it.
Four dollars.
We have it from the meeting the other night.
It's just under six million.
We have six million, is it?
Just under six million.
Six million? So now we're gonna pay it, pay it with the stabilization fund?
Right, two, two point three million.
Two point three million?
And change.
Yep.
Okay, now wasn't there a?
That's what's coming out of stabilization on the according to the.
That's what it's gonna cost.
Now, whatever happened to the grant from the state?
We spent that.
Through the federal, from the federal government?
What grant?
Wasn't there, wasn't, didn't the federal government?
The ARPA funds?
Start funding some of the bridge and bridge repair work in the country and didn't you say?
Infrastructure funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, the city, the the town of Palmer did not get infrastructure funds. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts got infrastructure funds, nine billion dollars.
Well, did the, is the state giving you any money or us any money to fund this project?
They are.
But you don't know when?
No, I don't know when.
No?
Right.
Or how much?
Or how much? We don't know yet.
How much?
Right.
So why is it taking six years to finally decide to take money out of the stabilization fund to start this or fund this?
I don't know. I don't think it's taken six years.
How long has that bridge been out?
It's been out for four years.
Four years. Four years.
It'll be five in July.
Five in July.
Mm-hmm.
And I can tell you that I know that some of that was from the council's inaction to decide on whether or not we were going to go with a trust bridge or if we were going to do something else. So I know that we waited, we postponed and postponed and postponed and we.
Part of it was because we, the town had applied for grants to try and fund it.
Right, there was a whole bunch of other stuff going on, yes.
Because ideally, you know, we would have wanted to fund it with grant money with a permanent replacement. But after a couple of cycles of that grant, we realized, you know, we needed to take action.
Right, we can't wait for the state.
Waiting for money to kind of fall into our lap for it.
Is this still gonna be a trust bridge or is this gonna be?
Yes.
It's going to be a trust bridge.
It's gonna be a trust bridge temporarily.
Yes.
Well, temporary for twenty plus years until something else happens.
We're all gonna be dead then.
Mr. Cosmeter, what are you doing on Thursday at 10 AM?
I'm probably gonna be in town.
Walk down to the Church Street Bridge. We will be having a pre-construction meeting. You can ask all the questions you want. The actual contractor who will be fixing the bridge, Roach Construction, will be there.
Roach Construction got, won the bid?
Correct.
They won the bid because according to this, you had some type of, was it Gil? What did I have there? What did I say here? Oh, that was, that was the engineering company, right? Gil Engineering?
Uh, yeah, that's a firm that we used, yep.
But so, so you're gonna award it today? Is that what you're doing?
Uh.
Get the money today?
No, we're going to allow Ryan to sign the contract by appropriating the money tonight.
Yes.
Okay, so this is gonna be.
Yeah, so we have to.
Very trust bridge.
Yes.
And the timeframe, right, Ryan, was still the end of the year, correct? Bidding, barring any unforeseen circumstances, we're looking still to have this complete by the end of the year.
That's my goal, yeah. I mean, I I will hear more from Roach on Thursday.
Right. Okay.
Now, this trust bridge, and I was led to believe that it was gonna be temporary until you get some grant money. And then, when you get the grant money, the trust bridge was gonna go down to the Main Street Bridge when you replace permanently the Church Street Bridge.
That is accurate.
That is accurate. So now somebody's saying the trust bridge might be there for twenty years.
Well, it could be. It could, it it will last more than twenty years if we don't get the funding for that bridge. If they don't fix that bridge, the state doesn't come and fix it, then we will at least have a bridge open for twenty plus years until they come along and say, all right, we want to fix it.
The most straightforward answer, Mr. Cosmeter, that I can give you is we will install the trust bridge on Church Street. Hopefully, it will get finished by December of this year. The state will come in at some period within the next, say, three to five years. They will start a project on Church Street. Once they start that project, we will move that trust bridge over to the Main Street Bridge in Thorndike. That would be the last bridge that you more than likely will ever see.
My question is, that Main Street Bridge is being inspected every quarter now, not yearly or semi. It's there every quarter.
Yeah.
So obviously, it's in danger.
It's an eighty-year-old bridge.
I know, it may get closed. So you may have a closed bridge and you got a trust bridge.
Right, but the trust, the trust bridge should allow for full traffic again, trucks and everything.
Yeah, there's no restrictions.
There won't be any restrictions, right?
All right.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Duke?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm David Duke. I'm from 1012 High Street in Palmer, Mass, Palmer resident. Thank you all for your commitment here as town fathers and town ladies, excuse me, select people. Well, I'll get right to my point. Obviously, my little concern is a collapsed storm drain on Cockins Road at the location of 191 Cockins Road. Basically, if you don't know the location, come from three rivers, go over to Mass Pike Bridge, and right prior to that, on the left-hand side, which is the east side of Cockins Road. There is a storm drain that the Town of Palmer Highway Department is addressing right now. It is totally collapsed, maybe even a couple of feet down there. There's a cone there, and they have done, someone has done cuts in the road in preparation for most likely it being rebuilt and restored. So, but prior to that, that has not worked, and all the water from Cockins Road had, is running onto a piece of property that I own. It has definitely eroded the farmland there and degraded it. There's also a culvert, which, when the water goes down the storm drain, it goes through my property approximately, we'll say, a hundred feet, eighty feet, and it goes below a entry driveway, so it goes perpendicular underneath it. It is also eroding because the drain connection is incorrect or has been compromised now. So what I'd like to ask you tonight is I appreciate the fact that the Highway Department is going, is addressing this. It is dangerous, it's an open pit, there's one cone by it. Fearful that some vehicle may be an accident may occur because of the collapse and the erosion underneath the road and my property. That would be the number one thing. If a subcontractor is going to do the rebuild on it, I'd like to see if an engineer or an engineering firm could look at the overall big picture and be sure that the existing metal culvert that goes underneath the road is intact and that it's flushed out and that it's not rusted or corroded. So actually, I'm asking you, thank you for addressing this problem. It it seems like it's going to get done, but I'd like to be sure that it's not just that one that one restoration at the street. I want to be sure that the the connection is correct. I'd like to be sure an engineering firm looks at it. I'd also like to have someone from the Conservation Commission, maybe Peter Isaac or someone like that, look at all the erosion that has occurred over the past, we'll say, at least five to ten years. Because there are also big ravines in my property that have been used for the drainage because the storm drain has been plugged and also it hasn't been functioning. So the only way that Cockins Road could drain over many years is right across my property. So I want to thank you very much for hearing me out on this. If you'd like to speak with the Highway Department, they've always been great for me. They've always been responsive. I have not contacted them on this issue because it seems as if they have it under under advisement or under work. I don't know anything else about it, but I'd like to be sure that proper engineering has looked at it, that the contractor who does the installation looks at the entire picture and also to have the inspection on the the culvert, which drains it into a stream which goes down to the Wabog River. So.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
We will talk to the DPW superintendent about this.
And do you have any suggestions on what I should do?
You've probably just done.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, because at this point, I don't even think we understand the scope of the problem at this point because we just, most of us probably just learned about this because I just did. And I live on Palmer Road, and I frequent Cockins almost every other day. And I haven't noticed an issue or a cone, so, I mean, it may have just just happened.
Uh, it's probably been there for, we'll say, two months.
I'm happy to follow up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. All right. I don't know where you are, though, because I just looked it up. So you're on the Chamber roadside?
Yeah, in fact, my grandfather sold the property to the Chamber.
Perfect.
Years ago.
Yep, I know exactly where you're on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the minutes for February 13th and March 13th. The February 13th minutes have been amended. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
No.
No. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes for February 13th?
I'll make the motion to amend the February 13th minutes of 2023.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna stay, I wasn't here.
Okay. And the minutes for March 13th? Do I have a motion?
No, wait, was I wrong? On the very last page, the resolution number 2023 dash 21. I don't know if it's customary or not, but the vote was for to against that it it noted who who was against it in the minutes.
Yep.
You know, and that way, if somebody looks, they can see who actually voted against it.
Yes.
That'd have been me, you. Please.
So would you like to see them amended?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to add to, no votes.
So.
It was you and Carl.
Yes.
I will amend it for that.
Can I get a motion for the March 13th, 2023 minutes as amended?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll jump up to new business. We have a couple of appointments tonight. We have two appointments to the Palmer Cultural Council, Jan McCoy and Judith Bichard. Would you guys mind if we just did one motion for those two, or do you want to do them separately?
Do all together, I would think.
Okay, we'll just, we'll do the Cultural Council in one vote, and then we'll do the Conservation in a separate, a separate vote. Can I get a motion to appoint Jan McCoy and Judith Bichard to the Palmer Cultural Council with their terms to expire in 2026?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have another appointment to the Palmer Conservation Commission for Peter Isaac. And Ryan, I think you wanna, do you want to give us some background on him?
So just really, really quickly, before this meeting started, someone came to me and brought me this article from back when Palmer was a town, form of government, had town meeting. And it's an article talking about the different warrant items for that town meeting. But it also mentions that in other action, the selectmen appointed Peter Isaac to fill a vacancy on the Conservation Commission. He has been an associate member of the Conservation Commission since 1981. This town meeting and his full appointment was in 1984. So Peter Isaac has served this town on the Conservation Commission for many decades.
Wow.
It's amazing.
And is still very interested in serving.
Yeah. Yeah.
He sent me a written letter asking to be reappointed, so I think we all owe him a debt and an applause for for his service for forty-plus years.
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I get that kind of commitment nowadays. Can I get a motion to appoint Peter Isaac to the Palmer Conservation Commission for a term ending in 2026?
I shall.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next, we have yet another very dedicated resident and employee of the town. We have Sue Koach here to give her department head report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. There's gonna be a little slideshow presentation. I thought you'd enjoy that, so let's see. TV on, so. It's the one for that? Is it on the TV? Do you want to read this when we get to it?
It's on.
That's me.
Is it lighting up?
Mm-hmm. It's warming up.
This is an overview of what the office does on a day-to-day basis. So it starts with the upcoming town election and then looking ahead. And the new legislation of the Votes Act that's been, that the government has passed last year. So you can see from 22 to 23, the amount of births, deaths, marriages, marriage records, meeting and hearing, posting, and dog licenses that the office does on a daily basis. And the filings of permits and zoning board decisions and denials, organizing and maintaining ethics training programs, and delegating and ensuring follow-up of public records requests, which we get, you know, very many on a daily basis, and business certificates. So our next election is June 13th from 10 AM to 8 PM. And on the ballot, we have councillor-at-large, one seat, candidate Robert Lavoy. District councillor, one, is Phil J. Hebert. And planning board has two seats open, and we have Scott C. Day and Shelby Francis Lamath. And for school committee, we have two seats with three candidates on the ballot. So Matthew J. Lovell, Bonnie Rathbone, and Joseph Numplegi. So looking ahead for 2024, which will be a big election year, starting off in March, we'll have the presidential primary. June 11th will be our 2024 election, and September's primary has not been set yet. And then November 5th will be our big election for president. So for the two elections, the primary and the presidential, those are when options for mail-in voting will come into play. And early voting for primaries and the federal election require weekends and longer hours. So the Votes Act was, you know, effective as of January 1st, and this is a big change that made a big, you know, in our office that now when you go to the registry for any kind of fulfillment there, you no longer have the opportunity to opt out to register to vote. You're automatically registered. So everyone in the Commonwealth is notified at the end of the day and for who was voted and who is registered. And the only way for you to get opted out is you have to come into the office or send me some sort of written, signed information that you want to be removed.
That's crazy.
It's the way things.
Take away some more freedom of choice.
So from January to April of last year, that's how many people registered, was 615. So January to last month, there's 1337. So when we get those people, they have to be acknowledged, we have to file, make sure they're in the system, make sure their address matches up to where they're saying, and make sure everything is complete and intact. So, and these are the mail-in ballot amounts for that. So started back in 2020, every ballot that went out, the postage was started at 70 cents. 22, it went up to 81, 23 is 84. And now for 2024, you know, the fee for the prices keep going up, so the increase, I'm sure, will be probably by then, it'll be 91 cents. So these are the numbers that we have, you know, on file of what happened for 2022, the elections, mailed out, received back, and in person early, and the total turnout. So as you can see, in a presidential election, it's always very higher, but it starts to increase steadily as we start last year to this year to presidential.
Just a quick question, how many registered voters in the town of Palmer?
Today, there was 9,122.
So very small percentage of people come out and vote.
But the voting by mail process increased tremendously because people didn't have to come out. So a voting by mail process, when we start from the beginning to the end, it takes seven minutes per person. So it starts at one, you know, you're receiving the application, and then it it, you have to go through thirteen steps to actually get that vote to be ready to go to the ballot on Election Day and to the voting box. So it's a lot of, it's, so you figure seven, and you're processing, you know, thousands of them, and you're supposed to be doing your regular day-to-day base, you know, work. So somehow we get it done because we have, you know, a good team here. Be interesting because for any kind of election, a presidential, your voter increases about 10 to 12 percent, people just interested in voting for president.
Could I just interrupt one second, and you might not know? Do you have any idea, do the feds ever kick in extra now along with this mandate that with the voter by mail that accounts for?
I don't think so.
I do get a small amount, yep. The the Office of the Election Commission, that you fill, there's a formula that they send in, you get three hours from 7 AM to 10 PM, they pay for those kinds of things, and the cost for the mailing, though?
Is that state or federal, though?
For the state primary and federal, but not for town or anything.
But again, nothing to cover the postage?
Or the, or the extra time that it takes you.
That's what I mean.
On the way up to Thorndike Street around the green fence, there's no addresses there that come in that get counted, correct?
If you're on the list and you did it properly, then you're counted.
But they're dead.
Thanks, Sue.
Oh, all right. So this is the traditional when you go to vote. It's three steps. You check in, you mark your ballot, and you put your ballot in the tabulator.
That seems pretty easy, huh?
Four, then you have to check out.
Yeah.
Four, you have to check out.
You say bye.
Yes.
So we, you know, the town clerk's office functions as a notary public, the justice of the peace, and we all are an all-around customer service-oriented department. And we're here to service our community with the utmost quality and efficiency they deserve. So that is my presentation, and if you have any questions?
I did have a question about, um, is there something that the town council or the town has to opt out of for local elections and like the mail?
So anybody who wants a ballot for the town election, it will be mailed to them, but they have to request it.
Okay.
And there is, they always have the absentee voting, if you're not going to be able to be at the polling location or if you've, of a permanent absentee, so those will be going out.
Right, because I just, I remember in the town that I previously worked for, the selectmen opted out of something like sixty days before the election, and I just can't remember exactly what that was.
So if someone interested in voting. So if someone interested in voting by mail, they can send me a letter, they can send me correspondence, as long as I have their signature with the correct address and post office box. And you're registered to vote by, so the last date of register to vote would be June third. It's a Saturday.
Okay.
How does that affect the nightly, so being a part of the election process for so many years now, being in my third term now, you know, running up here at eight PM to see the vote, the tally, you know, how would mail-in, or how does, I should say, mail-in votes affect that? Because chances are, you could be declared the winner electronically by the polls, but then you could be overturned by the mail-ins?
No, so.
There's a set date for you to collect them, correct?
So at eight o'clock with the closing of polls, where someone's at the mailbox out there or in the building, and then it has to be brought down to the polling location, checked in first here, then went go to the polling location, and then nothing is done. Because a presidential, they were still putting those ballots through the tabulator probably till eleven o'clock.
Oh, wow.
So, I mean, you have to get your regular walk-in voters to let them have their opportunity to vote, and then you're opening and sorting through those mail things. You have to make sure that, you know, they're opening the ballot there as they're, as the wardens that they're assuming that you're the voter, so.
Right.
You have to check it, and it goes through the machine and.
And they still check the street lists to make sure that you're a registered voter?
Oh, yeah, you have to check.
So everything is still compared, even if it's a mail-in ballot?
Of course.
Wow.
Signatures are compared when, just because if you're thinking about it, I know you're signing penalties of perjury that you're the person voting, but once it leaves my custody and gets in the mail, I don't know what happens till it comes back. So people would say, I don't know, maybe my, someone else in the family is voting for their candidate, and they didn't even get the ballot, but that's, so you can check the signature. It has to be the same as what we have on file because everybody has the signature from the registration of the RMV or when you come here, and you have to match it.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that is.
Yeah, it'd make a lot more sense to just do it the old-school way, you come in and vote.
Yep.
You won't ever see that.
Yeah, I mean. Well, there's, it's, there's no doubt your job has become tremendously more complex and more stressful over the past couple of years. So although none of it is in your control, we appreciate the work that you do and complying with all of the state's new mandates.
And you have the best candy dish in this building.
You do.
And I appreciate all the help I get from everybody up here, and it's a strong, great team. And, you know, I have great workers at the polling location, the wardens and the clerks. They're, give all their all for many, many years, and they, so I'm proud and I'm happy to have those employees that help me and make.
And we're okay for this year after our retirees of many years, and your staff is okay.
So we kind of start to train or let somebody watch and oversee. And you always like at some point to, someone like may want to choose to do a different part of the voting day, the duty. And it's good to have them all be able to see part of what everybody does to get the job done.
Yes.
We don't ever want to be stuck with, oh, that person has to leave now, so.
Right.
We all need to know what we're doing.
Yes.
Cross-training.
Cross-training, exactly. Amazing. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, Sue.
Does somebody have a copy of the election warrant?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, up next, we're gonna.
End up in my file.
We're going to take up the election warrant.
Notice of warrant for annual town election, Town of Palmer, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, County of Hamden. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, Town of Palmer, you are hereby required to notify the inhabitants of the town who are qualified to vote in elections to meet at several polling locations in said Palmer designated by the Council to wit. Precinct number one at Saint Peter and Paul Parish Center, twenty-two sixty-seven Main Street, Three Rivers, Mass. Precinct two and three at the Saint Thomas Parish Center, one thousand seventy-six Thorndike Street, Palmer, Mass. Precinct four at Saint Peter and Paul Parish Center, twenty-two sixty-seven Main Street, Three Rivers, Mass. On Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from ten AM to eight PM for the following purposes. To cast their votes in the town election as follows. Councillor-at-large, three-term, I'm sorry, three-year term, vote for one. District number one councillor, three-year term, vote for one. Planning board, three-year term, vote for two. School committee, three-year term, vote for two. Hereof fail not and make return of this warrant with all your doings thereon at the time and said place of voting, given under our hands this day, eighth of May, two thousand twenty-three. Palmer Town Council.
And can I take a motion to accept the warrant for the annual town election to be held on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three?
Do that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
All right, up next on the agenda, we have a resolution for the Church Street Bridge replacement for an amount of two million, three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Can you slide that so I can read it? It's easier for me to translate, so, thanks, Ryan.
They're all in order.
Oh, perfect. Town of Palmer Town Council Agenda, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four. Purpose, to authorize a transfer of two million, three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars from the stabilization fund for the replacement of Church Street Bridge. Motion is to transfer two million, three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars from stabilization fund, eight-three-nine-five-zero-zero-zero, to a capital projects fund for the replacement of the Church Street Bridge, dated May eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, so this is the appropriation that will allow Ryan to sign the contract for the Church Street Bridge and get that project going. Do you have any comments you want to make?
Just, I'm meeting down there on Thursday with the company Roach Construction. I should get the construction schedule from them then, and I'll really know a lot more then.
Amazing. Does any of the councillors have any questions or discussion?
What time was that again?
Ten AM.
Ten AM, thank you.
You could close up early.
Yeah. Yep.
So this is coming out of the stabilization fund, so it requires a two-thirds vote of the entire council. The entire council is not present tonight, so it would require all five of us to vote in favor in order to pass this ordinance or resolution. So I would like to make a motion to transfer two million, three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars from the stabilization fund to a capital projects fund for the replacement of the Church Street Bridge.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go.
This right here is just the construction.
Engineering is already complete, right? For the most part. I'm assuming so, yeah, that it's done.
Yeah.
It paid for, he said, yeah.
We're at the shovel.
That was the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar mass development grant.
That's what you were talking about.
We're at the shovel-ready part of this project. So the, the next item on the agenda, we have a resolution for a forklift out of the sewer surplus.
Correct.
Do you want to read that resolution?
Sure. Did I, just, I'm on a bet, did, did I miss this somewhere? When did we discuss a forklift?
I don't know if we did discuss a forklift, but the need came up.
Right, so I was just gonna say, I don't recall it, so.
Yeah. Well, I think before we have a discussion, we should at least just say what it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just, just read the purpose of it.
Town Council Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-five. Purpose is to appropriate forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars from sewer surplus to, I believe it should read, a new forklift for the wastewater treatment plant. Motion is to transfer forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars from sewer surplus to a capital project fund for a new forklift for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, so I was, when I was reviewing the materials for today, I went and I was looking through our capital plan and the sewer rate study, and I just, I didn't see anywhere that a forklift needed to be purchased. So I just was interested in what this investment is, why this investment needs to happen right now.
So, well, I put in the town manager report, our current forklift is from the nineteen seventies. Ken Lord has been trying to repair it, but he's received word that it is at end of life. And they looked into renting one, and it's eight hundred dollars a week, so.
I saw that, but did he, I'm assuming he put this out to bid, in other words, forty-nine thousand?
Oh, yeah, I have a whole list of other forklifts.
A bid list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I just thought it was interesting what, like, it should have been probably in their sewer rate study or a capital plan somewhere. I just didn't see it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially something that is that old, like, probably should have been included in a capital plan somewhere.
Right, it's not saying they don't need it, it just would have, it kind of feels like they're dropping it in at the last minute when they know we're going to approve it.
Well, I think the need is that it broke down, the one they currently had, and they can't fix it. And they're talking about renting one for eight hundred dollars a week in Brian's report, so.
Well, and it's a twenty-week lead time, so like, I understand the, the process here, I just.
It's a twenty-week lead time? So it's not something that's sitting on the shelf, so for twenty weeks, we're gonna have to pay to rent one?
Must still work.
I think he still has the one, the nineteen seventies one.
Just like on its last.
Plotting along?
Yeah.
Okay. So there, yeah, there's no plan to rent one.
Yeah. So I just.
So they're gonna be able to make do for five months until this one comes?
I'm gonna call BS on that, only because it says here that the parts needed to keep it operational, and it's leaking oil, and the brakes are now leaking, so it sounds like a safety concern, and it shouldn't be used.
I have the information that I was given from Ken Lord.
Correct, and it's not you, Ryan, I know. I'm just saying that whatever the information you have, it sounds like they need one now.
Well, that's what I'm saying, regardless of the purchase of this one, if it is twenty weeks out, what's, I guess, in lieu of your point, not using this one for safety reasons, how would they make do, would they rent it per job that comes up? In other words, I'm sure he doesn't intend to rent one just to keep it around in case they need it.
It's cheaper to buy a used one in, in the interim.
Sounds like Ryan doesn't have the information, so Ryan doesn't know, right. Ryan doesn't know, right, so, yeah.
Yeah, we obviously don't have enough.
From the information that we received, right, that's what I'm saying. It's that it seems like the current one that we have is not safe for operation. So, apparently, and if we approve this money, it's going to be, what, twenty weeks?
Twenty, yeah, that's what the quote says.
Quote says twenty weeks.
Mr. Dulcom has one.
So there's going to have to be some sort of supplemental, is what I'm assuming.
Rent it for nine hundred.
Right, that's going to cost somewhere, something.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
United Rentals or someone like that possibly, but again, this isn't your scope either, Ryan, so.
Right, he only has the information that was given to him, so.
Yeah, I think.
Right, so would it not, twenty weeks out, and so you gotta rent something for twenty weeks at eight hundred bucks, would you not have been wise to go, and I know you can't answer this, but it would have been nice to buy a used one somewhere, you know?
And then resell it and poop the money. We got all the answers, right?
Well.
Usually something from nineteen seventy, you can fix it.
Yeah, anything can be fixed.
The second.
But safety, yeah.
Capital thing from the wastewater treatment plant that's come up in the past couple of months that wasn't included in the scope of the sewer rate study. So we have that big issue that goes under the river that, you know, the, somebody.
Junction structure.
Yeah, the junction structure that, like.
Magically got filed out.
Yeah, thank you, which is a lot bigger of, of this project than a fifty thousand dollar forklift. But I just want to make sure that our, we have this plan done and that it encompasses all capital needs for the wastewater treatment plant. And I don't know if maybe a forklift isn't considered a part of that infrastructure, but I just, I didn't see a nineteen seventies forklift on the replacement plan. So that was just.
I will find out specifically why this was not included in any previous capital plans.
Yeah.
That doesn't change the fact that we need this forklift.
Right, oh, I don't.
I don't dispute that.
Yeah, I don't dispute that.
The only thing that I'm disputing is the extra sixteen thousand dollars it's gonna cost us to rent one between now and then should be included in this, I think.
Well, that's not guaranteed that.
Right, that's not guaranteed, right, so regardless, we need to figure out what we're gonna do between now and then. Where's that money coming from, is what I'm asking?
I'm not asking for any other money, I'm asking for this money alone.
Okay.
I don't think we need to rent a forklift. If we do, I will come up with the funds.
Okay.
I have a question, if I was, if I was not a question, I would want to know how much it would cost to repair the old one. Granted, it's fifty years old, stuff like that.
So we just.
When you're talking leaking, you know, you're talking ceilings that can be replaced.
Yeah.
You know, find out how much it would cost to keep this going.
So I think the town has done a really good job over the years of maintaining the equipment that we have, but when something gets to be over fifty years old, like, it's just, you, you're not gonna be able.
Well, beyond its useful.
They can't get the, they can't source the parts, is what the note says.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've dealt with this in, in the other community that I've worked in where you just can't, you get to a point where you can't fix something that was built in the nineteen seventies. It's just, you, you get to that point.
I'm saying, you spend twenty thousand dollars to rent one.
But we're, we're not.
Right.
I think that was a.
If that bridge.
A misunderstanding.
If we came to that bridge, I would, I would rather spend that money on a used one to have a, you know, are we not allowed to go to like auctions or anything?
No, it's really hard to find used.
Quality.
Equipment, quality equipment, so.
You don't know what you're talking, that's not true.
Yeah.
I guarantee you, I could get, find you one half that.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, is right.
Well, you're a day late, so we're gonna take the vote tonight.
Well, you can take your vote, I'm just saying that I don't think it's been well thought out.
Well, like Ryan said, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. If they need to rent one, we'll call United, get quotes, whatever we have to do.
Right.
In the meantime, it's not an emergency, so I would agree.
Start getting this one on order.
Carry on.
Great. I would like to make a motion to transfer forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars from the sewer surplus to a capital project fund for a new forklift for the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
They should include, it says tank not included, for fifty grand, they should just.
Give a tank.
Me being me, they should throw in a tank with the thing, come on. What is this, a flashlight we're buying? No batteries included, but.
Not included. We could use.
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, just because they need one, and if I don't, they won't get what they need.
I just, I just.
I agree with your book.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda is a resolution for the library flat roof replayer for fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars out of the capital stabilization fund. And this is another kind of a recent issue that's cropped up at the library.
This is one of two, correct?
Yes, yeah, so the, the, the library has two structures. The structure you see from the street, which is the multi-story structure, and then behind it is a one-story of flat-roofed structure. The taller buildings' roof, the flat roof, they all channel into the portico at the front entrance. And at the seams of all of those roofs, a leak has developed. So that's what we're repairing. I have, while I, while I had the roofers there, I had them look at the shingles that are falling off of the mansard roof, which is the taller structure. So I have a quote for those as well. The price of that quote is beyond the threshold to just do bids. So I would actually have to do a request for proposals and have other contractors come and look at that and also present cost estimates as well. But the. But the, uh, emergency repair of the leak that is actually happening, um, is what we're, what's on the agenda tonight.
So this is what you alluded to last month, it was kind of caused by the roof. And because of that, it's channeling down between that door and, and the slab.
Yeah, the, the roofer guy said, i- it is absolutely certain that the gutters for the library are not the right size. Those are normal house gutters and they should actually have like a commercial gutter system.
Right.
So the gutters can't deal with the water flow off of the flat roof and it's getting under the cement pad.
So is new gutters, right, so.
Yeah, that's gonna be part, that's part of the other quote for the mansard roof.
Okay, alright.
Cause I don't want to see repaired something.
I mean, well, actually, I'm sorry, the, the gutter in this one section of this roof will get fixed, but the whole gutter system is, is part of a broader quote.
Okay. Bob, do you want to read that?
So the underlying issue of the cause of it is getting repaired.
For this one section.
The gutters and stuff, I'm saying, no.
For this one section.
Okay, so there's other sections that are inferior too, you're saying?
Gutters, yes.
It's a totally separate bid he's yet to put out.
Right, it's, that would, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
And that's not considered split bidding because you're doing it in two different projects?
No, 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 because, um, one of them is fixing an actual repair that is gonna get worse and become more expensive. And the other one is not fixing a repair, well, it's, it's fixing, it's an on, it's an, it's a, it's a maintenance issue, I mean. Those shingles will always come off af- every twenty years or something?
Yep. Okay.
Okay, motion to transfer fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars for cap, from capital improvement stabilization fund. Eight-three-nine-five-zero-zero-two to a capital projects fund for roof repair at Palmer Public Library. Dated May eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
I just want to real quick ask, on the, on page two here is substrate, it says. All, all this stuff that's not included is, I'm assuming it's not needed, saying no thermal board is included. No vapor barrier, no insulation, this is stuff that's not needed for the, the job, I'm assuming?
Not the, this particular leak, no.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our last resolution is the snow and ice deficit.
Excuse me, Town Council Agenda, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Purpose to approve a transfer of funds from free cash to offset the snow and ice deficit. The motion is to transfer one thou- one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars, forty-eight cents. From free cash to provide funds for the FY twenty-three snow and ice deficit, dated May eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
And that is just the routine covering of the snow and ice deficit, every year we do this.
Correct.
Um, so we have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
How much is, how much are you gonna know? Free cash?
Can we ju- can we just finish our vote first? Thank you, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And that was, I had that from last time. Free cash is standing as of what, last week, Ryan, when we had our meeting? Little over two million dollars.
Yep. And is there any other new business? Nope.
No.
Seeing none, are there any subcommittee reports?
Uh, did you want to circle back to old business since you skipped it? I don't, I don't have any personally, but.
Okay, does anybody have any old business?
Just a quickie, um, and you can update this, but there's probably no real update. I see lots of progress at the Liza property, do, do you have an idea what their kind of timeframe is to? Looks like they're kind of salvaging what they can and then maybe the demolition of the structures are the last, or do you?
Yeah, I do have an update, um. Just trying to wa- say it all in my head first to make sure that I'm not gonna say anything, I don't want to say anything, yeah. Alright, so, um, I think we're gonna know more after tonight. Um, so the phase that they're at now, and it's a little complicated because some things you can do concurrently. And some things you gotta do sort of before other things, but they're getting close to demolition of all the stuff there.
Okay.
They haven't pulled any permits yet, so we're looking for them to pull a demo permit. Um, they started capping the water in the, uh, sewer, in the road.
I saw that.
Uh, so that's good, that's a good sign, that's what leads us to believe that they're gonna pull a demo permit pretty soon. Um, Linda La Duke right now is working with their engineering firm. Because, uh, and this is where the council, uh, and Todd Smola, uh, I think are gonna have to get involved. Because they have to put in a turning lane on Thorndike Street.
Oh, good lord.
Jeez.
And, oh, it's not, it's not that big.
One that exists in front of McDonald's.
Yeah, that, well, they've got. Yeah, then, then they have to, either way, they either have to extend it or put in a different one. The problem is, is apparently Thorndike Street is forty miles an hour. Um, there's no sign posted, so the chief and I had, took some struggle to, to try to confirm that. Uh, cause the chief actually thought it, it stepped down when you got to Big Y to like thirty-five miles an hour, but we couldn't find any record of that.
Theoretically it should, in, in a thickly settled area, that rule of it is.
Yeah, he was surprised it's forty there, so, um, the, to, to. The engineering firm needs with, well, to lessen the turning lane. They need the speed limit to be less than forty miles an hour, so Linda La Duke is making the checklist of the Mass Dot. And all the stuff you gotta do to request a speed limit change, so that's something we're gonna have to do going forward. Yeah.
No, is that section, that section's not state highway?
Yeah, it is.
That, well, we'll get all that confirmed, I mean, there were some questions about what was what.
Yeah, I thought that section.
Glad you brought that up, someone asked me, is there any idea what business might be going in there?
Oh, yeah, I, I know most of the businesses that could be going in there, the only ones that I don't know are, there's two retail spots that don't have tenants listed yet.
Yeah.
But, so the Chipotle.
Oh, they might be coming in?
No, they are.
No, they are.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Jersey Mike's.
That's a good one.
Subplace.
And Starbucks.
Uh, Starbucks.
All in that.
Right, uh, and then there's two other retail.